Good. Good evening, everyone. I will call to order a meeting in the Licensing Board. It is April 21st, 2025. We recognize a quorum of our Licensing Board, myself, Alderman Zingshaim and Alderman Butchlick here tonight. Our first item of business is approval of our Licensing Board Minutes from April 7th, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Zingshaim and Butchlick. Any corrections? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And the motion carries. We've got a number of items tonight. Our first is Game Over 228 North Sixth Avenue LLC. It's a liquor license. It's a new owner liquor license. Clerk, for all of our items tonight, I saw the packet is prepared nicely. Anything, I guess, to be aware of on any of these items in the packet tonight, or is everything in order for approval?
No issues. Police Chief might want to speak regarding Global Fest, though.
Okay.
Yeah, the only one we want to talk about it would be a Global Fest, and that's just due to the length of time that they're requesting we shut down Main Street.
Okay. That one's next. So let's go. Thank you. I'll motion to approve Game Over 228 North Sixth Avenue LLC liquor license. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Zingshaim. Any comments, questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Chief, why don't you talk Global Fest, special event?
Yeah, the... We're not objecting to the special event permit, the application. We've done our normal vetting. We've worked with the Downtown Association. It seems like it's a great event. Our only concern and thought that it would be prudent to have a council review, or I'm sorry, the board review and then council approval, is due to the length of time they're asking to shut down Main Street and the downtown. So it's the same permit area as our normal music on Main, farmer's market area with that music on Main location. But for Global Fest, they're asking to basically shut it down the entire weekend. Now Noel has told us that she's vetted this out with the members of the Downtown Association, with the merchants down there, and there hasn't been an objection to it. But just due to that length of time, it will be shut down basically the entire weekend. So I thought that needed to be brought to your attention, different than a normal, just vetting our normal concerns.
So on page 19 of our packet, Chief, is the application, and it says the event is going to take place on Saturday from 2:00 to 9:00, 2:00 PM to 9:30 PM, with a setup time at noon. What time would the Main Street be closed down?
Yeah, and they're looking to have it...
Because you don't close it down at noon, right?
It's going to continue until the following day as well, and won't be open again until 5:00 PM. So I believe that's...
Over 24 hours.
Correct.
I believe it's 10:00 AM through 5:00 PM the following day. So it's a significant amount of time that Main Street would be shut down.
And if I'm correct, that's a farmer's market day as well, so it would be shut down for the farmer's market, starting at, you know, whatever time the farmer's market opens. They would kind of go right into festival, and then it would be shut down until 5:00 PM the next day.
Correct.
So we're looking at, I mean, almost, you know...
The entire weekend.
The entire weekend, yeah, yeah.
When does the festival close for Saturdays?
9:30.
9:30.
They're asking that the road be continued shutdown, so they wouldn't have to take down the vendor tents and areas, so it would be a full shutdown.
My concern was for the downtown businesses. And I mean, I'm fine with it. I feel comfortable with it as long as the downtown businesses are in agreement. I think that it's not... It would be problematic if there were some businesses that, you know, weren't on board with it. But I think as long as the Downtown Association and the business owners are okay with it and they're at peace with it, I don't necessarily have a huge objection to it.
You said that Noel... I'm not on Licensing Board. That's all right. Ask your question. So Noel has vetted this with the business owners down there.
Yeah, just, and historically, we know not all business owners are going to always agree with every decision that the Downtown Association brings forward. But she... Our concern was that she discussed this with the Association and the majority of the business owners, and we haven't heard any strenuous objections. But I'm sure there will be some concerns from some business owners.
I have a question, too, from a non-member.
Go ahead, John.
I'm okay with them shutting it down as long as there's emergency access during overnight. If somebody's got, if they got to get an ambulance or a fire truck down Main Street afterwards, they need to be able to do that. I'm assuming they're following the rules, like for the farmer's market, the center lane is supposed to be accessible?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Just because I know they've been an issue before, what about the Bible Church? Have they raised any? Because I know they had an issue during construction.
I haven't heard from the Bible Church.
I want to make a motion to approve it. But if we have issues, can we go back and make sure that they open it for the following day, that it's open during the evening?
Well, the Downtown Association is always very responsive to any of our concerns. For Chief Norin and our, the police department's team, we'll make sure that there'll be access to all businesses for emergency vehicles.
Okay.
We'll work, continue to work closely with them.
All right. Okay, then I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Our next is Aspen Sky AB 105 Producer Full Service Sales Application. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next is West Bend Athletic Association Six Month Class B Beer License Renewal.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, John.
Second.
Motion and a second. I was going to say this is up at Quas Creek is where they use this in the summer months. Motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next one is Quick Trip 1082, store number 1082, change of agent.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick.
Second.
Second by Alderman Zingshaim. Any questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And our last is the Massage License Renewals that are in your packet. I'll motion to approve.
Second.
Second, Alderman Zingshaim. Any questions on that one? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Our Licensing Board is adjourned.
I would like to call the order, the Board of Public Works. We have two items on the agenda. Item number one would be the approval minutes of March 17, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Are there any corrections or deletions? There are none. All in favor, aye.
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 Item number one, agenda item, award contract 2505 Walter Water Utility Pavement Repairs. Good evening, Max.
Good evening. Thank you. This item is for the annual contract that we produce for the water utility to repair pavement at various locations.
He doesn't have a mic at the podium. Can you bring a... He's going to bring a handheld out for you. They can't hear you on the phone. Thank you.
Yeah, I want them all. Does this work? Okay.
Thank you. So this item is for the water utility to repair pavement, curb, and gutter and sidewalks in area where we had waterline breaks over the winter and during this construction season. So the contractor is set up where we have this list of locations where water utility had excavated the ground to make those repairs. And as we go and other breaks happen, then we provide the contractor the list, and they keep going until the end of the construction season. So obviously, the bid that we received, we received were based on the list that we have currently. And we received two bids, one from BMC Construction and one from JR Belkey. They are listed in your memo. Based on BMC's experience with the city, we believe they have the capabilities to do this work, and therefore, we recommend that the contract be awarded to BMC at the price listed on their bid of $117,350, and with a contingency fund of $15 of the total, 15% of the total bid, sorry, for a total allocation not to exceed $134,952.50. We go to the maximum contingency allowed by statute, because we do not know how many waterman breaks we're going to have throughout the year.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Any questions for Max? There are none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Max. Seeing no further business before the Board of Public Works, I adjourn as Chair.
I call to meeting, call to order a meeting on the Finance Committee. We have three agenda items this evening. The first is the Minutes Approval of our Regular Meeting on April 7th.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Alderman Schmidt and Alderwoman Sizer. Any additions, deletions, corrections that need to be made? There being none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Second item on the agenda, Resolution Number Three, Accepting and Appropriating Funds from the Wisconsin Telephonic Cardiopulmonary Resuscitation TCPR Grant.
Yep, thank you. In 2024, we applied for a grant through the Wisconsin Department of Health Services to help us with our EMD certification, sorry, Emergency Medical Dispatching Certification. All of our dispatchers are EMD certified. We utilize a vendor, a power phone, to provide the telephonic CPR training to keep their certification current. We applied for and were awarded the grant for 11 of our 12 months of our annual contract. On April 7th, we received $2,965.95 from the grant, was placed into the revenue account. I'm asking tonight for that to be transferred into our contractual services to pay for the power phone training program.
Thank you, Chief. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you very much, Alderman Burquist and Alderman Schmidt. Any questions for Chief on this? There being none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. The next agenda item we have is Resolution Number Two, Approving Sale of General Obligation Promissory Notes Series 2025A Without Designation as Qualified Tax Exempt Obligations. We've got Phil Cosson from Aylers with us tonight, who will walk us through that. Welcome, Phil.
Thank you. Good evening. Hear me okay?
Yes.
Yep. Okay, great. Well, first, thank you for letting me do this virtually tonight. This is what I would consider kind of a cleanup item. So back on March 17th, John Cameron from our office was there. We had you approve a, what's called a parameters sale resolution. There is one change needed based on information we received after the fact, and that is this bank qualification issue. So this is not, we're not approving, again, the parameter sale to move forward, but rather modification through this resolution to make sure that we completely state correctly that these, this issue that was previously, again, approved on March 17th would not be what's called bank qualified. And so what bank qualification is, is that for any municipality that issues less than $10 million in a calendar year, the debt that's being issued is what's called bank qualified. Bank qualified just means that financial institutions get some, what I'll call favorable tax treatment if they purchase those bonds or those notes in this case. After that was awarded or approved on March 17th, we learned of the potential fire station project, and that fire station project along with this normal capital borrowing that you are going through now will take you over that $10 million threshold, meaning this issue is, will be considered now being qualified. Now, it doesn't automatically mean that we won't receive bids, we'll receive bids. It's just a different tax treatment for some of the local, some of the banks that may decide to bid. Should not affect interest rate either. It's really just a kind of a cleanup to make sure that we allow ourselves the ability in the future to take on a future debt issue if the council decides there was a target date possibly as early as fall for a subsequent capital borrowing for the fire station. So this preserves the ability to do that issue at the same time. So this is really a cleanup issue. Now, if it's okay, I'm just going to give you a quick update. Also, what's happening with the note issue. This was scheduled for last week, Wednesday. There is a variety of issues that occurred. The main issue that occurred last Wednesday was the platform that banks and underwriters use to purchase bonds all over the country, which is called parity, was down, meaning we had four different financial institutions that were set up to bid, but they could not submit a bid because parity was down. So as a result of that, we decided to move the sale to this week, Wednesday, and with the hope also that we would continue to see a stabilization in the financial markets. Now, if you follow the markets, and I know everybody kind of gulps when you look at your 401K, you'll see that the market was down substantially again today. But that wasn't necessarily the case of the bond market. And that's really the vehicle that we play in is the bond market. So we did hold a public sale for a municipality in Wisconsin. Today, we have three, tomorrow, two on Wednesday. So we are keeping close tabs on what's going on with the bond market. It has stabilized over the last week. We're not seeing significant fluctuations from day to day, rather stable. And so as of today, tonight, we fully expect that we'll be issuing and selling the general obligation notes for the city on Wednesday. Now, if there's a change and we see a lot of fluctuation again in the marketplace, we may delay the sale again, and we'll stay in touch with staff to make sure that they're in tune with what our plans are, and we collaboratively make that decision, as we did this time around. So again, tonight's action is really just a cleanup of a resolution that was previously approved on the 17th, since we likely will not be bank qualified this year due to the future potential fire station borrowing.
Phil, thank you very much for joining us tonight, going through an excellent explanation of what we are going to be voting on here shortly, as well as for that update regarding the promissory notes that we are issuing. So very much appreciated. I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick and Alderwoman Sizer. Any questions for Phil at this point? There being none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Phil, thank you again for joining us this evening.
Great, thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you, you as well. There being no further business before the Finance Committee, I adjourn as Chair. I'll call to order a meeting of the Common Council of the City of West Bend. It is Monday, April 21st, 2025, more than 24 hours in advance of this meeting. Notice the time, place, date, and subject matter of the meeting was posted in accordance to Wisconsin State statutes. Clerk, can you please confirm this meeting was properly posted?
Yes, it was.
Thank you. I invite you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We recognize a full quorum of our council with us tonight. We have Alderman Engelking and Alderman Sparts joining us remotely. Thank you both of you for joining in, and the rest of us are here in person tonight. Our first item of business is approval of our Common Council Regular Meeting Minutes from April 7th, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Schmidt and Alderman Zingshaim. Any comments, questions, corrections? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'm going to read a proclamation tonight. Whereas Arbor Day is observed worldwide celebrating the role of trees in our lives, trees are among Wisconsin's most beautiful natural resources. The demands on our environment and resources necessitate an increased awareness of ecological values, and whereas West Bend has been recognized as a tree city, USA, for 40 years by the National Arbor Day Foundation for its tree planning ways, care of the urban forest, and high-quality forestry program. Now therefore, I, Joel Ongert, Mayor of the City of West Bend, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 25th, 2025, as Arbor Day in the City of West Bend, and I encourage all citizens to support Arbor Day, the efforts to plant and protect our trees and woodlands, for the well-being of present and future generations, and support our city's urban forestry program. So we'll put that in our minutes and celebrate Arbor Day on Friday, the 25th. We'll move on to our consent agenda tonight. I, I'm going to pull Global Fest out, just in case there's more discussion that the full council would like to have on that. So...
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
I need to abstain from the WBA. I'm being on the board, so we could do that separate also.
We can do that as well. All right, let's do item number six first. So this is a Six Month Class B Beer License Renewal for the West Bend Athletic, the West Bend Athletic Association.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Zingshaim and Alderman Butchlick. Any comments, questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? And Sparts will record as an abstain from the vote. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we'll take up items number three, five, seven, eight, nine, 10, and 11.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick and Alderman Zingshaim. Any questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. And our last item on the consent agenda is the Global Fest, Global Fest Special Event Permit.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick and Alderman Zingshaim. And I'll open up. Any questions, comments, discussion, if there is any?
My only question is whether we have any official report from either the Downtown Association or the bid regarding their membership's thoughts on the period of the closing for that festival. Well, we don't have an official report from them. The Downtown Association is the one applying for the permit.
Okay, gotcha.
Somewhat imply that they're in support of it. And when we, as all the department heads involved in permitting process, vetted out, one of the things I asked from our department was to have that conversation that it was indeed supported by the majority of the business owners.
Okay. Thank you.
It's a good question.
Any other questions? Yeah.
Sir, do we need time to let them touch base with these other entities, or should we go under the condition of approval with, that these conditions would be met? I wish Noel was here, probably answer some of those questions, but she's given us our assurance that she's had those conversations. So this permit process started several weeks ago, and conversations. So I think if they're going to have more conversations or concerns, they've had adequate time.
I just wanted to mention that Noel is aware that this is at council tonight. Staff did reach out to her to let her know.
Thank you. Any other questions? There is a motion and a second on the floor for approval. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. We'll move on to our items for consideration. Number 12, Ordinance Number One to Annex, approximately 107.6 acres of land from the town of West Bend to the city of West Bend, located on the south side of East Rusko Drive and west of South River Road. And you can see the tax key numbers are listed on our agenda. Jim? Make sure your microphone is on, too, Jim. Thanks.
In February, the Plan Commission made recommendation to the council for annexation of this 107 acres. This is basically directly south of where Progress Drive intersects with Rusko Road. This is an area that's been talked about several times for annexation. We finally have a petition for it. The lands would be temporarily zoned industrial, so this would be an extension of the industrial park that we have to the east and also to the south. So we're asking consideration for the petition for annexation.
Thank you, Jim.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Alderman Sternig and Alderwoman Sizer. Any comments, questions, discussion?
Yeah, is this going to be folded into a TID?
There have been some discussions that it may, but it hasn't fully come to that, those terms yet for TID discussion.
The question was, is this going to be eventually folded into a TID? So I don't know if your mic was on, but...
Yeah, please.
It is. Okay, good. Sorry. Any other questions? Seeing none, there's a motion and a second on the floor for approval. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks. Our next item is possible action regarding a TIF developers agreement with Lakewood Farms. John?
Good evening. This particular development agreement you discussed last month, so it should be fairly familiar with you. But I'll just go through the highlights. Essentially, it is a development agreement related to the tax increment district over on NN and 18th. Essentially, the highlights would be that it outlays the property valuation guarantee that's on page three. If you go to page six, that also talks about the PEGO and the reimbursement to the developer from that perspective. And if you have any questions about that, I'd be glad to dig deeper into it if needed.
I can entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick and Alderman Sternig. Any questions, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thanks. Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries with seven to one. Our next item is number 14, Termination of Ziegler-Benz Developers Agreement and Wingate Creek Business Center Developers Agreement. John, are you taking that one, or?
Ian's going to...
Ian?
You have questions.
Yep. So this is the termination of an existing developers agreement, and, well, two existing developers agreements within the Wingate Creek Business Center. The reason this is in front of you is because they're, technically, in the original developers agreement, it terminates upon the termination of, or on the closing of the TID. We are terminating this early. All obligations have been fulfilled under the developers agreement. The only ongoing, ongoing obligation is the indemnification, the environmental indemnification that was in the original developers agreement, which is called out as an exception. So this is pretty routine. It's just, we have to, because it's stated in there that it terminated automatically upon the termination of the TID, we have to act because we're terminated it early. So the council has to approve it because of that.
Thanks, Ian.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Alderman Schmidt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Zingshaim. Any questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 15, Mike Phillips Water Bill Discussion with Possible Action. We had quite a bit of discussion on this two weeks ago. We had quite a bit of discussion on this two weeks ago. Can certainly have more discussion if you'd like, otherwise I'll entertain a motion. Alderwoman Sizer.
I will make a few comments. I thought about it a lot. The world is not black and white, it's gray. I think we all know that, and I think this is an exceptional situation, and we should look at it based on the circumstances. It was accidental. When the city looked at the, at the residence yard, they noticed puddles and ice in the yard. Therefore, it was hose running that caused, you know, indicate that that was the cause of the high bill. The invoice, what bothered me most was that the invoice was 21 times higher than the normal bill. And it bothers me that the city wouldn't have caught that earlier. You know, wouldn't there be a red flag going up if your bill was two times, three times, four times higher than your normal bill? But it was 21 times higher. Now, the resident has agreed to compromise, to pay the full water bill, but there's a strong indication that the sewer was not used, and they're willing to discount the sewer charge. What they would be paying in total with the discount would still be 10 times their normal bill, which is a huge amount. I, if it were a small amount, you know, I wouldn't make a big deal about it, I would say pay it, but it's a sizable amount, 21 times the normal bill. Wouldn't the city catch that before it got to that level? That's, that's my concern, one of my concerns. Because it does look like it's accidental, the resident's willing to pay the full water bill, just not the full sewer bill. And it's still, it still is way too high. I think it would be fair, I'm sorry that it had to come to the council, I wish that there could have been more of a compromise with the city in the background, saying, gosh, yes, we can see there are puddles, there's ice, it looks like it was running, you didn't use that part of the yard, you didn't know about it. I wish the city could have compromised a little more rather than bringing it to the council. But I would be in favor of the discount that was discussed at the last meeting.
Thank you.
It's my opinion.
Thank you, Alderwoman Sizer. Alderman Butchlick.
Yes. I did stop by and saw Mr. Phillips. I saw where the garden hose was, and the location of the hose was on the south side of the house. It's visible from the sidewalk. And I do believe at our last meeting, Mr. Phillips did say that, yeah, he saw water back there, but he has a sump pump, and he thought it was a sump pump. I believe that at that point, if it was my place, I would go to back to make sure, I have a sump pump in my house also, it doesn't run. So there's a red flag right there, I don't have a sump pump that runs. I'm not sure, and that's beside the point. I believe that there is some responsibility on Mr. Phillips for checking out why that water was pounding and why the ice was back there. Yes, I know that bill is, and I was not aware that the sewer utility was willing to give him some discount off of the sewage, is that correct? Oh.
They gave a discount on the water.
Yes, on the water, which is, yes. But on the sewage, not. I just, it's very, you know, everybody has in the home, and if there's something that looks out of place, I feel that it is our responsibility to at least find out what the reason is. Why was that water there? You know, and I know that, speaking, I used to work for water department, and I know that the water department does not go around, you know, and if they, if they see it, if there is a water leak in the street, it's obvious, it's, everybody's, it's visible. They know what to do with it, they take care of it right away. But in a switch-in like this, and I, you know, Mr. Phillips, I, I really feel sorry for you with that, that huge bill, but when I was, read the email that says that that water was at least eight inches above the sprinkling, that's quite a bit of water that's going through that faucet, which somehow I know I would probably hear something unusual in the house. You would be able to hear the water running. I can hear when my, my water softener kicks in. I can hear that when it's running. And it's probably about the same thing as what was running through your, your faucet. And I have a hard time going against what the rules are. The rules are that sewer utility just does not give discounts because it's, it's just, it's, that's their policy. And if we start going against that policy, I feel that we are going to be having some, some issues with more, more people challenging this. You know, and this is a very tough decision, it is, but after I stopped by and saw where it was, there are some situations that should have been checked out before this whole scenario came through when the water department finally found out what the problem was. So my vote would be that we have to stay with our policy. We start going against policy, I have a feeling we're going to have issues down the road.
I would, I would reiterate what John just said, and I think it's out of benevolence that the utility goes to the, does a courtesy call to the homeowner to, to point this out, to make sure that they, they recognize that there's a problem. I think that's a good thing, and it was very proactive on the, on the utility's part. I, I think they did what, I think they did a good thing for the homeowner on his behalf. I do feel bad for you as well, there's a lot of money involved here, that's got to sting, but I think this policy is well thought out, and, you know, it's, you got policies for a reason, right? You start poking holes in it, it's just like poking holes in a boat. It doesn't, it's not effective after a while, so I think they're there for a reason, I think it's a good policy, and I think we should stick with the policy.
Thank you, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Butchlick, Alderwoman Sizer. Any other comments?
The only thing I want to add is, I think this, at least this brought the issue to our attention, and is there a, a way that the city can catch something like that earlier? I think this brought that issue to the attention of the city and to the council. Can we catch it when it's two times, three times the normal bill, or?
The water utility bills quarterly, so we read the meters every three months. The bill prior to the one that Mr. Phillips received was normal. There is no way the water utility could have known there was any water running anywhere. We don't read the meters, we would have had no way of knowing that his water was running. So to accuse the water utility of not finding it sooner, there is no way we would have known. As John referenced, if there's a leak in the street, people are going to see the water and let us know, we may see the water. This leak was at the rear of his residence. There is absolutely no way we could have known. Once that meter reading hit our billing system and was downloaded, within 24 hours, we notified Mr. Phillips. In my opinion, 24 hours is a really good response time.
It is.
Because there is no way we would have had any knowledge of that leak. There is none. So I'm going to defend the utility on that one.
Thank you.
Because there's no way, for you to say to get there sooner, there's no possible way we could have, unless for some reason, we would have seen the water by the side of the house, and we wouldn't have. We don't normally go on properties, it's out of our jurisdiction.
Okay, thank you. That clarifies it.
Thanks, Ruth.
You're welcome.
You know, if the utility was treating him outside of the, the parameters of the policy, then I would be in his favor. But I think they did what they, they followed the policy, and I think that's important. So I, I just don't think it's appropriate to discount or to rebate or whatever you want to call it.
Any other questions, discussion?
This is, uh, Brett Alderman, this is her two. There is a, like a waiving of some of the interest or additional charges with a repayment or a payment plan that's established over a number of months as a possibility for the sewer charge, is that correct?
Ruth is coming up to answer your question.
Yeah, thank you for the question. We do offer payment, payment plans.
Ruth, is that microphone on? Green light's on, okay.
Um, we did offer Mr. Phillips a payment plan. It, he said he was going to think about it, we don't have an answer. We offer residents payment plans. What that will do is we give you a number of months that we agree upon with the resident, and there are no penalties then that apply to that account. You still are responsible to pay your normal quarterly water bill, but you, the, the amount that's in the payment plan, you have X amount of months to pay it off, and no penalties will be applied.
What are those X amount of months?
It really, we can negotiate with the customer depending on the size of the bill. In this case, we could tell him, we don't have a pan, plan, and again, that would be confidential information between us and the customer. We could say you have 10 months, $400 a month, let's just say. Again, we base it all, that we can do on individual circumstances, what they can afford to pay per month, and we work that out with them.
Any more questions?
I would like to make a motion that we deny, I take it that he's requesting some type of discount here, and I, I'm going to make a motion to follow the water utility's sewer policy, and there will not be any discount awarded to Mr. Phillips.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion by Alderman Butchlick and a second by Alderman Schmidt. This is a motion to deny the request for relief on Mr. Phillips' bill. Any further discussion, questions? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries seven to one. We'll move on to our reports tonight. Our Airport Commission met on April 10th, 2025. John, was that you?
That was me.
Right.
And I unfortunately was not able to attend. I was out of town and missed the meeting, but I do have the minutes, and I can give a report. They approved the minutes from the previous meeting. The, Mike Shaw gave an update on the fuel farm. They are shifting some money to acquire the Michaels land. The parking lot near the EAA funding was, building was, funding issues were talked about. The RAF RAD LLC hangar received power, so one of the hangars that didn't have power now has electric power supplied to it. I think that has to do with the easement we approved a couple months ago. He has received comments back from the FAA regarding the West Bend Municipal Airport master plan, and I will share those when I get discussion on that in the future, hopefully by the next, at the next meeting. Turf repair, turf damage repairs are happening from the plowing, from the winter plowing and that, they like to fix that up. Hangar inspections are coming up in May. The fire department will be going through along with, with the Mike from the airport, and he'll be doing their annual inspections, bring those, make sure everything's safe that way. And security cameras were ordered to include in the security system that the city is using for the property. That's all I have.
Thank you. Library Board met on April 15th.
Thank you, sir. The last meeting of the Library Board was held last week on April 15th. All members of the Board were present, with the exception of Board President Bart Nikowski and Members Harder and Wright, who joined via Teams. Vice President Walkholz conducted the meeting, which started with the Pledge of Allegiance. The consent agenda was approved and financial reports were given. Noted deposits included $54.65 in our money market account and a whopping six cents in our checking account. Whopping. The Library Director's report included staff reports from the various department managers. Steve provided first quarter statistics. A key positive stat was that volunteer hours are way up, while the number of circulations have leveled off. This is important as we are focusing on building relationships, not just circulations. The Board was joined by Cindy McDonald, who is the Community Engagement Manager. She spoke of how the, both the youth and adult programs are conducting, are contributing to this idea of community engagement and outreach. Events like the Family Fair and Family STEM Night are examples of how programming is intergenerational and happening at our library. She also spoke of off-site engagement, which includes reaching out to the community members like Tony Cable from the Norbert and from the staff of the Hub. This is called relationship. Cindy touched base on the fundraising aspect of engagement. There is a cost for doing this type of work, and she touched base on that. And finally, an example of community engagement. West Bend has a growing Afghan community. In addition to the obvious language barrier, transportation has been identified as an issue keeping individuals from the library. So steps are being taken to help break these barriers in things like driver's education and licensing. Steve finished his report with information that library staff will be conducting in-service training later this month with members of the Police Department, which is cool. Library Board President Bart Nikowski reminded members that next month we will have board elections, so if anyone was interested in a, a board officer position, next month will be their opportunity. The next meeting of the Library Board is scheduled for May 20th, and having no further business, the meeting was adjourned.
Thank you, Alderman Berquist. Chief?
Not much to report, just assurance that your very strong department head team is continuing to focus on continuity of operations, moving forward, keeping the city served, well-served as it deserves. Callie Thiel, our Communications Director, started today, first day in the office, would take this week to get her feet on the ground, get all of the operational aspects in place, and then we were, had a conversation this afternoon about strategizing to get her in touch with all of you, so she could make that. So we'll give her a couple of days to get her desk and office and emails and phones set up, but she's excited to be here, and they're already looking at property, homes in the city of West Bend to move their family to, so.
Cool.
Gained a communications director and a, and a citizen family.
Good.
That's all.
Thank you, Chief. Any other Alderman reports tonight?
Sparts.
Sparts, you can go first.
Awesome. I just have one, I wanted to report that the Wingate Playground meeting was held last Wednesday by part in, in the council chambers with Mike and our people from the Parks and Rec Department. We had two citizens besides us show up and ask a lot of good questions, it was a nice one-on-one meeting kind of situation, and we, we'll be proceeding with that, and more information to go out in the summer. We hope to use communications and, and get that message out that August 9th we'll be doing the build, so we'll be looking for volunteers on the 9th of August. More information to come on it, but the neighborhood's pretty excited about a new, new parks out, so let's, we'll make it happen.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Brett?
I'd just like to remind everybody that, you know, April showers bring May flowers, and in honor of the guy that used to sit next to me, I just thought I'd say that, because I'd like to mention that adopt a catch basin program that I think would be a good thing, where citizens would adopt the catch basin in their neighborhood or in front of their house, and make sure that it's clear that we can avoid problems with debris gathering in those catch basins and then flooding our streets and causing all those kind of issues. So if you're interested, just keep an eye on the catch basins out front of your house and keep them clear, so that the roads stay clear and safe.
Thank you. Anybody over here?
A couple things I was up to the past couple of weeks. Went to a nice ribbon cutting at Shepherd of the Hills Church, they put a, they had a big Capitol campaign and put in an absolutely gorgeous new sanctuary out there. Pastor Clark would love to show it to you if you ever want to give him a call and swing by. Celebrated Peggy Fisher's 30 years in business at Shooting Star Travels. She's been a long time, she and her husband, good members of our community, serves on the bid board, president of the bid board right now. Had a invitation to go to lunch with Senator Tammy Baldwin a couple Saturdays ago. She was visiting communities in southeast Wisconsin, she was in Hartford after us, and she was in Ozaki, I think she said, before she came here. So I brought Chief Dearing and Chief Noren with me, and we took the opportunity to ask her for money. Congressional funding is, applications are open, usually known as ear barks or pork, but if they're handing it out or putting it in bills, we're going to not be shy to ask. And so we were asking for funding for our new fire station, and she put together an application for that that was due on like Monday or Tuesday, and our, our lunch with her was on Saturday, so it was, it was good timing. I have absolutely, we have no idea if we're going to be in the running for that type of money, but we-
money, but we weren't shy to ask. That's about it for me. Alderman Sparts?
Yeah, I thought of something as you were talking too, that's coming up and affecting the whole city, is the road construction. Please beware motors as you're motoring through the city, be careful with all the workers improving roads. It's a, it's something people want, and they're working on safety and updating the corners and intersections, and it's gonna be, gonna be a hassle like it always is, but you gotta look for long picture, the long shot, and that's a safer road and a safer experience through the city.
That's right. Anything else? Our agenda is over, I appreciate you all being here, thank you, gentlemen, for calling in, and have a great week, try to stay dry and be safe, so thank you very much, we're adjourned.